Call to order. The City Commission meeting for September 7th, 2021. Let the record show that we're missing one Commissioner. Commissioner Otterman. Commissioner Frederick was online. He'll be voting from the telephone. So you can hear us, okay? Commissioner Frederick?
Yes, I can hear you.
First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Winningham, any changes to the Order of Business?
Mr. President, Commissioners, there's no change to the agenda or Order of Business.
All right, thank you. Any questions on the Order of Business? Now I look for a motion on the Order of Business.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion on the Order of Business? Not all in favor of the Order of Business as presented, state "aye."
Aye, aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that Commissioners wish to discuss? Now I look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second.
I'll give you the question. Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Now we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes "aye." Motion carries. We'll move right into Administration and Finance. And the first item up this evening, we have a proclamation, and it's Extra Mile Day. And I'll be reading this proclamation. This is, "To celebrate Extra Mile Day 2021, whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2021. Now therefore, I, Scott Decker, President of the City Commission of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2021 to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal to be fixed." And I would look for a motion to approve this proclamation.
I'll move to first.
We have a motion by Commissioner Walla to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. All in favor of this proclamation, state "aye."
Aye.
And this proclamation has been approved by the City Commission. And I have signed it. Pass that down to Mr. Winningham. Thank you, all citizens that are going the extra mile every day to make our city a better place, being either volunteering for a nonprofit or any organization within the city. I think we have an extraordinary amount of people that volunteer in this city, and it's greatly appreciated. So, thank you so much. Our next item up is the Theodore Roosevelt Regional Airport Budget. And that will be presented by Airport Manager, Mr. Brown.
Good afternoon. Kelly Brown, I'm the Airport Manager at Dickinson Airport. And today I have for you the airport's budget that was approved during the last regular Airport Board meeting. Did everybody get a copy of this in their packet? I know last year we had a little trouble. I think we only had the expense page and not the income page. Our projected income for 2022 is $1,277,811. And we have a projected expense of $1,183,011 for a $94,800 difference. If anybody has any questions on any of the particular cost centers of line items, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any questions, Commissioners, on the Dickinson Airport budget?
I know you guys are working on some new runway. Is that included in this, or is that going to be an old expense and not part of this budget anymore?
So, the budget that you have in front of you is just our operating budget. So, the budget for the airport improvement program, those are capital improvement funds, and we budget those out separately. Most of those are grant, either state or federal grants, and a local share, which we've already got in place for that particular project. So, it's not reflected in this.
Are there any other questions, Commissioners? Ms. Brown, with all the money flying around the federal government, are we talking anything with our terminal in the future?
Yeah, so that's a great question. After our last conversation, I contacted our consultants, and we put together basically an outlay of kind of the steps that we need to go through. There is funds available in this mega infrastructure project that keeps getting kicked around. It's not yet been approved. It's, you know, working its way through the system on the federal level. But potentially, there could be $20 million available for terminal construction. And we've highlighted, you know, step by step what we need to do to take advantage of that and to kind of strategy, get, put a strategy together so that we can capitalize on those funds when they are available.
One thing that I think that we should also look at is that, at one point, we had talked about connecting city water and sewer. If there's any way there's something in that infrastructure bill that could assist with that.
I did some checking on the water sewer, and there are a number of questions that have yet to be answered. Rapid City, South Dakota, is going through a similar project, trying to connect their airport to the city's water and sewer. And there were some issues that came up with federal AIP funds being used for that particular project, and that if the FAA funded a portion of that, then they weren't going to allow any other entities to tap into that. And that's a question and an issue that still has yet to be completely resolved. So, we'll kind of let Rapid City take the lead on that and see how that all plays out. We'll have a better idea how to bring it to the city and the county when we move forward with that particular project.
And on the expense side, you're not adding any employees, right? I didn't see any, or...
We are actually adding one additional employee, one additional housekeeping employee.
Okay.
And then we have had a number of positions open through national attrition that we didn't fill. We had the pandemic, and everything kind of fell off the cliff, so we just left those positions open, filled the responsibilities that we had with who we had available on staff. And we just recently hired a new airport operations person to fill that open position. We don't plan on filling that housekeeping position until after the first of the year.
Are there any other questions, Commissioners?
Commissioner Frederick, any questions? What I would look for, then, there are no further questions. I'd look for a motion to approve the airport's budget.
I'll move to first.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla, second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Ms. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes "aye," motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just take a second to express my thanks and the airport's thanks on the city's continued support for the projects that we have ongoing, and we really appreciate that. It's been great. Thanks a bunch.
Runways coming along fine?
Yeah, the runways, the project for this year is right on target. We're right where we need to be. Next year, the funds have all been secured. We just had our grant week last week, so we have our federal funds in place, our state funds are in place, our local match is in place. So, next year, funding all taken care of, we just have to get the work done. We have a November 3rd, 2022 opening date, so we're looking forward to it.
Good deal.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, our next item up is, we have public safety and a monthly report from our fire department.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This evening, I'll be presenting the July and August report because I did miss July's report. So, just a reminder, the services we provide, we do provide more than just fire suppression. We do respond to EMS calls, hazardous materials calls. We do do public education, fire prevention, and we are a part of several regional response teams around the state. So, for the month of July, we had 60 calls, and for August, 58. That does put us at 520 calls year-to-date. That is a 31% increase from 2020. Here's a breakdown of the calls by month. Pretty consistently, we've seen increases across all months with the exception of March and July, we were down a few calls, but we're seeing some significant increases month by month compared to last year. Our top three call types for July were EMS calls, false alarms, and good intent calls. And those good intent calls had a lot to do with the burn ban and people having fire pits and those getting called in. So, that's why we've seen an increase in our good intent calls. For August, again, it was EMS calls, false alarms, and then hazardous conditions. There seemed to be a lot more construction going on, and we saw a lot of gas lines getting hit, and those fall into that category of hazardous conditions. So, we did see a significant increase there. Calls by station, for July, it was 30 to 67%. Obviously, like always, Station 1 sees the largest number of calls. And then in August, kind of the same, had a few more calls down in Station 1's area, which is south of the freeway. Our response times for July, we're actually seeing those response times come down a little bit for Station 2. We're staying pretty consistent around Station 1. We're right there with what the benchmark is for the national average. But we're really working hard as a team to bring those numbers down, and they reflect in our numbers there. Training hours, we had 359 hours for July and 348, which included a lot of hazmat training and some officer training that we conducted. And that does put us at 4,792 hours. We're sitting right in line with where we need to be about this time with our required ISO training. We're actually a little bit over where we should be, so that's looking really good. It looks like we're going to meet all of our hours this year. And I'll gladly stand for any questions.
Any questions for Chief Presnell?
I can give a brief update.
I was just going to ask you to give us a brief update, and just kind of give a background of what happened this weekend.
So, we were requested through FEMA because of the Hurricane I to send a crew down to the Baton Rouge area. So, we were able to fulfill that request along with the Williston Fire Department. So, we did convoy down Saturday morning. Our crews arrived in Baton Rouge late Sunday evening. They were allowed about 12 hours of drive time a day per the FEMA guidelines, so they hit that, but they made pretty good time. They spent one night in the base camp, and they were assigned to a small volunteer department that's about two hours south of Baton Rouge, the Shriver Fire Department, about 9,000 people. It is a volunteer department that does have staffing during the day. So, they're down there actually providing full fire protection for that area, sleeping in the fire station, and they're actually pretty excited to help. We did send four people.
Good deal. I'm glad we could step up as a city and send some assets down there to assist them. I know it's, they're talking about maybe a month in some of these areas before they even have power. So, and it's going to get, any of you who've been down south this time of year, not fun.
And as we're talking about this, it's a good service that we can do, but also we are reimbursed by FEMA, so it's not like it makes an impact to our city's budget.
Right.
Other than, I don't know.
That's...
I guess that's something we didn't talk about, like, do you incur any overtime or anything while these folks are gone, or...
No, FEMA picks up the entire cost for the staffing that we sent. We were pretty strategic on the people that we sent down. We took one from each shift as to not create the overtime. And then Mark Selly also went down. We felt like it was a really good training opportunity as well to have one of our senior fire department members go down and kind of see how the process works. So, if we ever experience a natural disaster to that extent, that we have somebody familiar with the process. But yeah, the costs are 100% reimbursable through FEMA.
And we did have, you know, there was questions if we're going to impact our ability to react, and we got reassurances that there would not be. They have it covered here.
That's correct. I mean, our primary goal and concern is the city of Dickinson, so we definitely wouldn't leave the citizens of Dickinson less protected regardless of the situation. So, we made sure we were taken care of here first.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Time to maybe comment on what you guys have learned on this weekend?
Yeah, we definitely can. So, if you're around on Sat...
I'll just plug for you.
Yeah. If you're around on Saturday, we do have a 9/11 memorial stair climb going on at the BAC. I believe it starts at 9:00. We're there all morning, so come and join us. Get a team together. There's an event on Facebook, that's the best way I know to get to join. We do have 83 participants, so it's looking like there's going to be quite the crowd. Thank you.
Yep, well, I'm on team.
Thank you for bringing that up. All right, thank you, Chief. We'll move into engineering. And the first item up is a cost participation and maintenance agreement with North Dakota DOT for work on Highway 22, Heart River Bridge. That'll be handled by Nirm City Engineer Marshick.
President Decker, Commissioners, enclosed in your packet is the cost participation and maintenance agreement with the DOT concerning a deck overlay, expansion joint replacement, rail retrofit, and spa repair on the North Dakota Highway 22, Heart River Bridge. This is a primary regional system, a part of our primary regional system with the DOT, and therefore, following the CPM agreement, we as a public agency have no costs associated with this project. It's just a continuation of our maintenance that we've already had in place in this location. So, city engineering staff is recommending approval. Do you have any questions on this agreement for me?
Thank you, Mrs. Marshick. Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this cost participation and maintenance agreement?
Oh, I do have one question. It says the LPA will pay 100% of actual construction, preliminary construction engineering, utility relocation right away, and any other cost considerations that are not federal aid eligible? Do we have anything that's going on as part of this?
If we would add something to their ongoing project, say, oh, we decide we want streetlights, or we wanted something outside of that project area, those costs we would be responsible for, but we don't have any of those in with this project.
Are there any other questions for Mrs. Marshick?
I have one. Do we know when they're going to be working on this?
Not at this time. Not yet.
Okay. Will it close the pitch down, or will they do it like one side and then the other side?
I'm sure they'll do one side and the other side as they move forward with it. They would have, it'll neck down the traffic to get through, but I don't have plans in front of us to know what that is going to look like at this time. They're still in the planning stages, but that would be my guess, because they will do one lane and then the other instead of closing it altogether, just through traffic and pedestrians.
Any other questions? Now I look for a motion on this agreement.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Ms. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes "aye." Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item up is Public Works, and we have a change order for the landfill leachate devastation project. Mr. Zeroff?
Good evening, President Decker and Commissioners. This is the change order for the devastation project at the landfill. This is change order one with the contract with BG Excavation. It includes three field changes for this project. The first item of the field change is the pipe was in very short supply, so the pipe they could get was one class above what was in the project bid. So, we negotiated with BG and negotiated the amount of $4,940 to get a increased class, a better pipe for this project. Like I said, the pipe that was specified was not available, so this was just to recognize the quality and value of that pipe. The second item was to add a manhole and a check valve near our headworks where we connect. During construction, we found that when we excavated the pipe and opened it up, we were having backhoe problems from our headworks. So, this manhole and check valve will solve that issue. And then the third item was to, I think, add additional length of four-inch pipe and lower the pipe that connects to our headworks. The original pumping from the landfill was done by a portable pump and only done in the summertime, so the depth of the pipe wasn't a concern. But with this project and as the landfill grows, we needed to pump this leachate or material year-round. So, once we found the depth was, we could freeze, this item changed so we could lower the pipe. Total of the change orders are $36,660. Public Works staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Zeroff. Any questions for Mr. Zeroff on this change order? Sure have this number right. And this is change order number one for, what is the project number here? 6167-007.
That's, yep, that's the Houston Engineering, our city project number is 202005.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Zeroff. Any other questions on this change order?
I'd move to approve this change order.
We have a motion to approve the change order by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes "aye," motion carries. Mrs. Zeroff, you have a task order with Apex Engineering for a downtown water main replacement.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Originally, we looked at doing a task order, but this is more an approval of scope of services for the downtown. I believe we can put this under the task order number five, which is our current task order, which is our water model update, which, under that task, it, they provide routine updates with infrastructure and perform on-call water modeling tasks and make recommendations to future water main pump and storage improvements. So, I believe this, if this scope is approved as a subtask, we can include that under that task order five. So, what this is, is right now, we're having, as we knew, we're having aged cast iron pipes in the downtown area. We're having some valves that aren't working because of their age. And so, we're looking at replacing some valves and start, as we planned to budget a couple years ago, start replacing these cast iron mains. We've done a lot of work recently, and we're spurring up some of the water downtown now. Most of it's just rusty-looking water from the cast iron pipe. But to eliminate that, because of that and the age of the pipe and some of those water breaks we've had, that the pipe is so thin, you can almost put your finger through it. So, this is kind of the start of a pre-planning effort to determine which lengths of pipe we want to start with, which valves we want to fix first. I think probably within this month, we're going to try to replace three or four valves downtown in preparation of next year's main replacement. Right now, we're looking at maybe a block at a time. If some of that pipe looks worse than we had planned, we might do a bigger project and bring forward. But this scope is for $6,500. It'll just help us with our water model, with our valves and age pipe, determine which area we want to tackle first, and, you know, kind of see the best pre-planning for this longer project.
Part of that task order, I know we have issues with storm, our storm drains, and that, are we looking at that too? If we're going to dig up the street and replace water mains, I think we should probably be looking at if they're in close proximity, some of these old stormwater issues.
We can sure look at that. Right now, I've been focused really on the water mains, but I think that's a lot of good pre-planning, especially if we have a block that the pavement surface is poor, the water main is poor, we have some bad storm, you know, that would rise to the top, right? Maybe that's the section of pipe that we want to tackle first. So, we can sure look at the other infrastructure to see if that would help determine which part of downtown we want to hit first.
Well, I know if we're going to tear up blocks at a time, it's never easy.
No, and one of the things too, with replacing a section or a block at a time, we want to also replace the service lines.
Right.
You know, originally, we would probably replace it from the main to the curb stop. Now, some of these projects would probably... Now, some of these projects would probably replace it from the main to the house, just to make sure, especially if they're lead services. Be the utilities' responsibility to make sure that's replaced. And that's one thing we're looking at with the state revolving fund. If we do go some of that, we can get 90% of that paid. So we're looking at different options.
Okay.
So we'll try to bring it to the commission.
That's good to hear.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Frederick.
Mrs. Zeroff, is any of this pipe, is it possible to do any of that relining that you're seeing becoming so popular right now?
Yes, definitely. A lot of cities are doing the relining. One thing with relining, you can sure save, you know, above-ground excavation, especially if there's an area where there's not many services connected. If our goal is to replace the service lines too, if we dig up a lot of services, it doesn't make a lot of sense to do relining but to replace. But if there's an area that we can rely, reline, not to have to redo the surface or block traffic or inconvenience, I think we're sure, we'll sure look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Zeroff on this task order? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on this task order.
I'll move to approve.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right. We have Commissioner Frederick. A motion to approve, second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Zeroff. It is 5:00, and we do have a public hearing this evening, and this is on our Chapter Four Amendment. This will be handled by City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President Commissioners. Before you, you have ordinance 1725. As President Decker had indicated, this is the second reading and public hearing of ordinance 1725. This ordinance is a result of the recent changes at the state legislature with regard to the selling of alcoholic beverages on Sundays. So as you will read, this will change that requirement as it currently stands from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. The staff recommend approval, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, Mrs. Winko. Any questions from commissioners on 1725?
I have one that was brought to me. So the effective date of this ordinance, as it passes today, would be 30 days from now?
No, it would be effective on the second reading. So once it's signed by President Decker and City Administrator, it will be effective.
So that's Sunday?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll sign it tomorrow. Any other questions for Mrs. Winko or city staff? This is a public hearing, so I will open up the public hearing. You wish to come to the podium or call in, please come up to the podium, state your name. And if you have any concerns or comments on ordinance 1725, if you're watching online and you wish to make a comment, please call area code 701-456-7006. Again, that's 701-456-7006. If you have any comments, please come forward, state your name. Any comments on 1725? This is changing the time that an alcohol establishment may start to sell alcohol to 8:00 a.m., except for unspecified dates. Anyone have any concerns? Hearing no concerns from the public, in the chambers or from online, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or comments on 1725? Now I'd look for a motion on ordinance 1725.
I'll move to approve ordinance 1725.
We have a motion by Commissioner Walla to approve ordinance 1725.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. The next item up, I don't see Dr. Luton or Mr. Anderson. They know we're on Mountain Time, right?
(laughing).
We will, our next item for the public hearing is at 5:15, so we will go into, since they are not here, we will go into planning. Sure it'll be just in time to cut Mr. Hadley off at one point, but he's used to that. Good evening, Mr. Hadley.
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioner. Before you have two lots that it would be Resolution 26-2021, and there were lots that we put for sale through the advertisement process. We actually advertised six lots. We received three bids. These two bids were exceeded the requirements of the bidding process, and we have a number of other lots we're going to target to sell in the future. Based on that, staff will recommend that the city commission approve these two and accept this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions, commissioners, on the two lots that we are going to sell? I think Mr. Hadley has basically diagrams or some photos of the lots. Could you just explain Lot A and kind of a location for the public, Mr. Hadley? Fatfish? Is that?
(inaudible).
Okay, that's the lot behind you, Pen Tai? Okay.
(inaudible).
Okay.
Behind Lake James, if you know that.
Any questions for Mr. Hadley on the two lots? Now I'd look for a motion on 26-2021.
Since they're on the same, we can approve it with one since they're on the same.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Just a quick comment to the, we are going to look at our process. I've spoke with Mr. Winningham and look going forward on, especially the, if somebody submits a bid and it's not to our required amount, if there's some circumstances why their bid might be low, if they put a narrative in there.
Good.
So.
We sure can, as long as we're advertised and City Attorney Winko's on board, just let me know what you want to do.
So I'll make a comment, Mr. President, and for the commissioners and for the public. So we haven't deviated much from the past for our code states. The City Administrator does have some ability, as long as I detail that out and how we accept the bids. And so what we have tended to do is go by the assessed value. So one of the ways we can do that is make sure that when we send out the bids, we'll specify some criteria that would allow us to have some judgment so that everybody has the same chance. And so if they don't meet the minimum bid now, it simply gets cut off.
Right.
And I think that there are times when that may not be sufficient based on the best interest of the city, and so we will look at our process and put some caveats within our bid process so that there's more reasonable bids that come forward. We can look and see what those reasonable bids are so that some of these properties we could then sell.
All right. And get them out into the public and make them useful when just sitting on some land that we're never going to use. And just for the general public's information, when we do sell city land, Mrs. Carlson, you can kind of give an update with how that, those funds, when the funds come in, what we do with them?
Yes, President Decker. Commissioners, what happens is the funds come into our general fund under the sale of lots, and then per our ordinance of the future fund, anything 50,000, the first 50,000 is, and royalties, mineral rights, and some other things, go into our future fund. That's how that is done.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I just wanted to make sure the public knows where we're putting that money when it comes in. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hadley.
Thank you, sir.
We'll move to commission items. We don't have anything in building and codes this evening, so commissioners, are there any items that, not on the agenda, that you wish to bring up?
Mr. President, I kind of visited with Linda a little bit when I got here, but I would like us to look at our animal finds, please. Just came to my attention of a constant complaint about a barking dog in a certain neighborhood that's been disrupting, and it's, to me, it's shocking that there's only a $50 fine for someone that has a nuisance of an animal. And I know there's a complaint letter going out, but something to kind of look at and evaluate so we can address the issue and help those neighbors that have to listen to the poor dog barking all the time.
And a lot of that isn't just the dog, it's the situation that the dog is put into.
It's owner.
Right.
Yep.
And I think we will address that. Mrs. Carlson, we address any new fees in December.
You're correct, President Decker. After we submit the budget in October, the 1st of October, then we go in and we do the fee schedule, which has to be approved by the second meeting in December so that it's effective that 1st of January for the next year.
Mr. President, to piggyback on Ms. Carlson's comments, because this is done through the criminal side, so there could be some amendments that we have to see on our criminal code sections to be in compliance with what the city fee schedule says, so we could also be seeing that too, depending on what the commission decides they want to do.
Okay. We'll get us the appropriate paperwork that we need to look at and see what we need to adjust if we have to pass a resolution or modify an ordinance to make that happen. So I know it's, it is happening more and more with individuals that are adopting dogs and then leaving them. So we'll try to correct that. All right, it is 5:15. Time for public comments. If you're in the audience and you have something that was not on the agenda this evening, please come forward, state your name, let the commission know what your concerns are or comments in general. If you're watching online, you can call in at 701-456-7006 and voice your concerns or questions to the city commission. Just please state your name when you call in. So anyone have any public comments that were not on the agenda, any items, concerns, questions? Please come to the mic. Anyone?
Hello, Jeff Fitzek, Dickinson resident. Say, I just have a question. I was at the Stark County Commission meeting briefly today, and Commissioner Dean Franchuk made the public aware through that venue that Dickinson Planning and Zoning was looking at extending its ETZ zone in the near future, and he just wanted the public to be aware of that. I was wondering if you guys could possibly expound on that. He felt he'd expressed to the public that it seemed somewhat sudden, but if you guys could maybe explain some of the thought process on expanding it. There was at one point a comment that there'd be 74 square miles around Dickinson covered by the possible extension of the CTZ zone. That's a lot. If you could maybe explain a little bit more of that for the public's awareness, for the people who are outside of the city of Dickinson who might be impacted by these changes and what they might expect to see by them.
The change was brought on by the census. Since we have met a certain criteria, we can expand our ETZ by an additional two miles outward. Right now, we're two miles outside of the city boundaries, so we can expand it another two miles outward. It basically, what it entails is that individuals in that, in those areas would fall under city code for building, any new buildings, or say if they're doing a remodel. And this is, and Mr. Winningham can verify, this is state statute and century code, I think that allows us to expand the additional two miles.
Yes, Mr. President, and for the public, it is, under the North Dakota Century Code in its Chapter 40, Tac 47, in that provides for a city municipality to increase their That came at the release of the census data on the 2nd of April, so that gives some more planning. Essentially helps for the majority of population to be able to look at future land use, all those things that we consider in ETZ. Very little changes occur because the city already has an agreement with the county that we will look at compliance and zoning for floodplain in the current ETZ. And our current building department looks at permits and helps the county already. So I don't, I don't know what else to say because some of it is pre-decisional and it has to go through the process. And we have a planning and zoning meeting that'll be on the 15th of September. We'll have an agenda item that will briefly talk about those changes that could occur, and then that'll go before another, go before this body during an ordinance reading. And so there'll be about six weeks in, for planning. So I don't know about suddenness. I would, I would say that the federal government waited about 22 months to give us census data that should have been readily available. Maybe that was due to COVID, not sure, but we finally got that data.
Is the, I'm sorry.
Because the population's 25,649 in the incorporated area of Dickinson.
Is, are those meetings that you referenced open to the public for comment then or attendance?
Yes, they are. Those are all open public meetings.
And also, does the century code require you guys to expand to that extra two-mile limit, or is that an optional thing that the city is choosing to exercise?
So I would say that that's, it depends. It doesn't say that you have to do it in the century code, but I believe that for the benefit of the entirety of the city, it's in the city's best interest for the majority of population to always consider what's happening in the extraterritorial zoning around our major population.
We have about another additional in the ETZ, and I might be off a little bit, but almost 6,000 additional citizens that live in the ETZ, that pushes Dickinson well over And one of our concerns is we want to do some work on Patterson, possibly some reclamation work out there. You know, Park and Rec now has Patterson, they own Patterson, except for the water. We'll have to deal with the Corps and Bureau of Reclamation and et cetera, every federal agency that wants to lay claim to the water or whatever such. But one of the things we would like to do out at Patterson is possibly dredge Patterson, make it viable recreational area again. This will allow us, if the ETZ expansion, allow Patterson to fully fall underneath that. There's some floodplain issues, FEMA. Some of the modeling that came back originally from FEMA put a lot of our housing along the eastern drain, the canal over there, channel, in a floodplain, and there was some hydro data that I think we could, as a city, would help. If there's further building on the north side of town with some of the modeling and some water storage there, that we could remove some of those houses, hopefully. And I know Mrs. Marshick's working hard, trying to get some of those houses removed out of the floodplain, along with Apex Engineering. We're trying everything we can to save some dollars for citizens in the city, not putting them in a floodplain.
Okay. Thank you, guys, for letting the public know about that process.
And it will be a public, like Mr. Winningham said, September 15th, be a planning, normal planning and zoning starts at 7:10 in the morning, and it's open to the public, anybody can attend.
Thank you.
Well, I see Dr. Luton, but we are, is there anyone else from the public that has any comments about items not on the agenda this evening? Anyone online? Anyone from the public? Mr. Tuesday looked like you wanted to get up. Maybe not. Maybe you wanted to get up and leave. So I think I see somebody coming in. One quick item before, if that is Mr. Anderson, one quick item that I did miss during the commission section. Are we still all good for that budget meeting on the 14th?
Yes.
In the morning, early in the morning?
I did a question that, do we need to turn in our information before that, or will we just come and discuss it that way?
I think it is full discussion, so. But you know, if you have anything on those requests, the personnel requests, or if you have anything, I've already turned mine into Mr. Winningham, my ideas on any of the personnel and the COLA, the healthcare. I know staff is still continuing to meet with different healthcare providers and insurance providers, or continue to work on that. But if you do have any ideas, please turn them into Mr. Winningham.
So, Mr. President, on that, the meetings that are continuing with healthcare providers and future benefits, or how we would change that, won't be for 2022. But it's a long-term, cities should always consider some of those options. But if commissioners would turn in, if you have comments individually back to me as the administrator, that would help at least formulate some of our answers before that date, that would give us some time to at least look in some of your concerns. And some of those things that were on that initial draft have already changed. So during that two hours or so, that'll give us one final draft scrub before we come before the commission to meet some of the timelines. But I think we're on a good glide slope.
And I think it would be helpful if you do have some new data, scrub data, push it out to us. That way, that might even cut down on some of that time, too.
Okay. Dr. Luton?
Well, thanks. Thank you, Mayor Decker, and members of the commission. We just wanted to come back, because we're pretty excited about our academy, and we hired a director and give you a short update. Mostly, I'm just, I'm excited about the partnerships in the region and in our community around this plan, and what it's going to do for our community and our students. But I'll let Mr. Aaron Anderson, he started about a month ago, I'll let him give a brief update on where we're at, and then I hope you might have some questions for him. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That's good. Thank you, Dr. Luton, Mayor Decker, commissioners. Appreciate the time today to come and introduce myself to the commission and kind of give you an update, as Dr. Luton alluded to, about the Southwest Area Career and Technology Education Academy. A little bit about myself, I guess, I'm a rugby North Dakota native, matriculated, I guess, to North Dakota State University, Ag education degree there. Found myself in a classroom for five years at Turtle Lake Mercer Public Schools, and for the past 12 years, I served as a state supervisor for agricultural education with the North Dakota Department of Career and Tech Ed in Bismarck. And so that opportunity allowed me to get an intricate knowledge of all the areas' career technical education centers around the state, all the high school CTE programs around the state, and expand that out to the region and even nationwide. And so I'm excited about bringing those experiences here to Dickinson and help get this academy off the ground. I keep telling people my expectations are high, and hopefully in the end, not hopefully, in the end, we are going to have the best area career tech center in the state. And so we're going to have that model out there, and I'm committed to make that happen. And to give a little update on the project, I guess, we ran into a few issues, I guess, in getting our joint powers agreement established, just with some century code issues, working with Dickinson State and Dickinson Trinity, since they're not technically recognized as secondary public schools in the state. But we've worked through that now, and we're moving forward with initial approval from the Attorney General's Office with Partner Schools. And we'll hopefully have this entity established here over the next probably 30 to 45 days. Currently, we're working on expanding and getting Partner Schools joined on officially to the academy. And so that's meeting with the various school boards of the different high school or school districts around Southwest North Dakota, and having those conversations about getting their students involved with our academy, but getting their school districts officially signed on. And so shortly, I'll actually be headed over to Southheart, which is to their board meeting tonight, and they're a partner school, as well as Keel Deer. And then we're looking to add, you know, the additional high schools in Stark County, as well as the surrounding region here in Southwest North Dakota. And so that's the big work that we're doing right now, is getting those member schools a part of this. In addition, we're under the gun a little bit, in the sense that October 1st is a deadline for the North Dakota Coronavirus CTE Area Center Grant. And that's a $70 million grant that was allocated by the North Dakota Legislature to fund and expand CTE opportunities across the state. And we can get a grant up to $10 million, and so I'm working hard to get that grant application completed, submitted. And so hopefully, towards the end of October, November 1, we're going to get news that we have an additional $10 million of support to really make this project a reality. Once we get, you know, those dollars established, as well as support from other entities, we can start moving forward, figuring out programming, figure out how we're going to transform that Halliburton campus on the north end of town, to really make it a high-quality educational space. That'll provide a state-of-the-art facility with state-of-the-art equipment that's recognized by industry, that'll give our students, our community, the exposure, the training that they need to find a successful career here in Southwest North Dakota. And so I'm super excited to help lead that charge and be a part of really something special for the region, not only Dickinson, but for the region. And so, you know, with that, there's a lot more work to do and things to get done by that October 1 deadline. And the one ask, I guess, I have today is to help spread the word, we're looking for letters of support, commitment for this project, not only financially, but from industry. And so spreading the word to everyone we can about this project and how they can be a part of it. The other great news I have is, just this last week, we were informed, we got a grant from the North Dakota Consensus Council, I believe, is the entity. And that grant is going to allow us to do some industry roundtables, some events over the course of the next couple of months, where we're going to bring industry stakeholders, business leaders, community leaders together, to really gather input and feedback on what programming, what partnerships, equipment, anything you can think of that'll make this academy something special, and allow those voices to be heard, gather that data, gather that feedback. So that'll really help in the direction of where we're going with this, just to make sure it's validated by industry, as well as validated by the educational entities in the region. And so look for that. A number of you, I'm sure, will be a part of those roundtable discussions, and I always open and value feedback and input regarding this project. So with that, I guess I'd field any questions, comments, or concerns from the group.
Well, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any questions for Mr. Anderson?
Mr. President, I'll just make a comment, just to follow up with Mr. Anderson's request. We have a staffing of a memorandum that we are looking forward to. That'll be in conjunction with our budget appropriation approval, which would give the, I think, that letter more weight. It would give the commission options to add to some of the previous voiced commitments that we could put as an appropriation within our budget process, and that we can add that to the letter to get that back to him before the one October timeframe. And that's it.
Well, I think we all look forward to being part of the CTE and having some input. I know there's a lot of ideas been floating around, a lot of good ideas, and hopefully we can, as a city, give a few ideas on some of the needs that we here as commission, or we have needs in the city here, for that technical skill coming out of there, so we can put these young men and women to work right away. So that's the goal here. So I know there's a ton of shortages out there, so we'll just keep working, working with you guys, and I'm excited. I'm excited to see it go forward, so.
That's the great thing about this project. It's going to be for all students, whether they're at Trinity, whether they're at Dickinson Public, whether they're at Bellfield, Southheart, Bowman, you name it. It's for all students. And this morning, I told the county commission I sound like a broken record, but we're going to provide the programming, partnership with Dickinson State University, to give these kids industry experiences, certifications, dual credit, early entry, so they can get trained here in Dickinson, and they can stay in Dickinson, keep our kids at home.
Good deal. Any other comments, questions? Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think that is it for this evening on the agenda. So commissioners, unless you have anything else, any other comments, look for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
We are adjourned.